Call the regular meeting of the city council for Monday, May 6, 2024 to order. And I'm going to invite Brownie Troop 56608 from Fisher Elementary School, Amy Lippert, if I got that right. Where is she? There you are. Our troop here, we're going to do something a little different because we're going to feature the talents of our girls, if we're allowed to say that anymore, from Fisher. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance, and we're going to do it in Spanish. So, English and Spanish. And we're going to do it in English first, I think, because everyone here can follow along, and then those of us who can do it in Spanish will join. So, if you, girls will come up here, line up facing the flag. That's very good. And who's going to start the pledge this, today? Okay, I think you are. So, whenever you're ready, we begin, okay? In English first. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think some of the aldermen were struggling in English. So, let's do Spanish next. All right.
Thank you, girls, and to everyone else. I'm sorry to keep you waiting. We had some important business that we had to meet on an executive session. We usually don't go quite that late. So, if you want to stay for a little while or a long while, you can. If you have to go back to do homework or something, leave whenever you feel you need to. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Schenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Pastito.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Next is receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum this evening?
Nobody has signed in, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at public forum but did not have an opportunity to sign in before the meeting began? If so, please raise your hand. We see no one is going to participate in public forum. We'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
6.1, executive session meeting minutes of the Elmhurst City Council on April 15, 2024. 6.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on April 15, 2024. 6.3 accounts payable, May 6, 2024, $3,400,931.52. 6.4 referral, review Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Homes for a Changing Region Program. 6.5 report, case number 24PO3, amended preliminary and final plan unit development with site development allowances, Timothy Christian Schools. 6.6 report, request to declare surplus obsolete electronic police equipment. 6.7 report, termination of the 2014 consent order with the state of Illinois. 6.8 report, water treatment chemical purchase. 6.9 report, York Street Butterfield Road intersection improvements, I.D.O. joint funding agreement for Phase II professional engineering.
All right.
6.10, sorry. 6.10 report, North York Street sidewalk improvement, I.D.O. joint funding agreement for construction. 6.11 report, North York Street sidewalk improvement, construction engineering services agreement. 6.12 report, Park Avenue Bridge rehabilitation, construction engineering services. 6.13 report, Golden Meadows Park temporary construction easement. 6.14 report, 2024 sanitary sewer and manhole rehabilitation project 24-15, see item 9.1. 6.15 report, 2024 water main improvement project construction bids, see item 9.2. 6.16 report, Park Avenue Bridge rehabilitation project construction bids, see items 9.3 and 9.4. 6.17, an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision and final plan unit development with site development allowances for the construction of townhomes on the property commonly known as 240 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.18, an ordinance amending section 44.137 entitled limited parking zones enumerated of Division 5 entitled fee parking lots of Article 7 entitled stopping standing and parking of chapter 44 entitled motor vehicles and traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. And 6.19, an ordinance declaring items and surplus property is obsolete and authorized on the disposal of the items and surplus property.
All right. We are going to pull item 6.2 from the agenda for some possible corrections. We'll present that next time. Is there any other item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to pull either for further discussion or to vote no against? Alderman Deuter.
6.18.
6.18. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. 6.4, 6.4.
6.4. Anyone else? All right. I'd like to ask for a motion to prove, to pass the consent agenda minus items 6.4 and 6.18. Alderman Jensen with the motion. Alderman Nudera with the second. Clerk Tamer.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Schenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Pastito.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda passes minus items 6.4 and 6.18. Back to item 6.4. Would you read the referral, please?
I forgot to pull everything. Hold on one second.
No rush.
6.4 referral, review Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Homes for a Changing Region Program.
Alderman Deuter? Was that Alderman Erby, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we need a motion to put the referral. Alderman Deuter? And I think we need a second on the referral. Alderman Jensen. Alderman, do you, do you want to pass to Alderman Erby or did you want to?
Yeah, this is a referral. It's an introduction to, for consideration by the council. It's typically the way we introduce a new topic, and it's assigned straight to committee. It's unusual for it to be polled, and I will defer to Alderman Erby.
Ah, thank you.
Alderman Erby.
The reason I pulled this is because it's a great move for Elmhurst. So, I'm very proud that we're doing this. So, I brought it out of consent agenda to show how bright it is and what a great idea. And I appreciate the city manager's efforts on this, as well as the mayor. The Homes for Changing Region Program will allow us to come up with some strategic planning on our, on our housing situation. It won't cost the taxpayers anything here in Elmhurst. The program is, as it says, it's been in place for, since 2004. It says 2005. They initiated in 2004. There was a, our neighboring towns around us, 2008, Northlake came on board. They've been a member since that point in time. 2012, Maywood and Oak Park. 2014, Addison, Bensonville, Villa Park, and Wooddale. 2018, Naperville came on board. Since 2021, they've got over 60-plus, as it says.
Alderman Erby, I'm going to make a point about this.
Sure.
This is just a referral, so the debate would be on, do you think it should be referred to committee or not? Because they will go through all the things that you're talking to and maybe reach the same conclusion, maybe not, but.
Right. I just want to make sure that, I know it was going to get voted either way tonight with the consent.
Voting only on, should it be?
So, I just wanted to pull it out so we would show that we're voting on this separately?
Okay.
Because it's a great program, and I didn't think it, I wanted to not be in consent agenda.
Well, we're not voting on any program. We're only voting to refer it to committee.
Correct.
They may decide to do something with it. They may decide to vote it down.
Or they may decide to vote it down tonight, because I polled it.
Well, we're, that we might vote not to refer it to the committee.
Correct, correct. So, I want to make sure that I'm telling everybody that I'd like it to be referred and that it's a great program. So, at that point, I'll go ahead and
Okay.
cease my, my polish on this, on this topic.
All right. Any other discussion on the referral? All right, Clerk Tamer?
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Schenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Pastito.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Referral 6.4 passes. We're on to 6.18. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 44.137 entitled limited parking zones enumerated of Division 5 entitled fee parking lots of Article 7 entitled stopping standing and parking of chapter 44 entitled motor vehicles and traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code.
All right. I may have a motion to put 6.18 before the council. Alderman Jensen with the motion. Alderman Nudera with the second. Any comments, Alderman Jensen?
I defer to Alderman Deuter.
Do you have discussion or you're just intend to vote against?
The latter.
All right. All right. Any additional discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
No.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Schenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Pastito.
Was that me? Aye.
Sorry. Nardini.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent. Ordinance 6.18 passes. Thank you. We're under reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials, and when you have a fifth Monday, I'm sorry to say, we have a number of them, so buckle up. So, this is an important announcement. On our next council meeting on May 13, I should say, committee meetings, we will break from committee at 8:00 p.m., and we will have what we will call Capitol Budget 101. And we are going to have a extensive presentation by city staff about our capital budget, the process, how it's used. This is something I think will be important for all of the aldermen. Even if you've been on the council for a while, I believe you'll learn something new, as will I, and for members of the public. It'll be something that is a topic we haven't covered this way before. Item two, I want to thank the Walk and Rollers Group for a very successful bike safety day attended by our police and fire and a number of other, a good number of residents. I was there, and I think it was a perfect day for it. Also, for our weekend, Art in the Park was another hit. It brings a lot of prestige to our community, so I thank all of the organizers of that. Our Memorial Day Parade will be on May 27 at 9:30 a.m., immediately followed by our Memorial Day Service at Wilder Park. We're getting there. All right. So, on tonight's consent agenda, the council approved a report from the Public Works Committee that was the termination of the 2014 consent order that we entered into with the state of Illinois. And this is a milestone for us, but more so for those who were on the council when it was entered into. It's the culmination of four years of planning and 10 years of execution to help our community deal with stormwater and sanitary sewer troubles. 2018, actually, 2010 and 2011, and to a certain extent, 2013 were very challenging years for the residents of Elmhurst who experienced backups in the basement and other kinds of flooding issues. We had a number of severe storms and power outages in those years. Then Mayor P. T. Ciani and the city council hired RJN engineers and Christopher Burke Engineering for a thorough examination of our sanitary system and our stormwater system to create a vehicle for community input. We had the Stormwater Task Force where numerous residents volunteered many, many hours to review our sanitary system report, the stormwater report, the electrical grid, the COM Ed Service Report, among other pieces of information. So, we're grateful to all of the residents who volunteered on that task force. And while much time and money has gone into resolving the issues, there are specific people to thank for helping the community, and I may miss a few, and you can call me tomorrow, but Mayor P. T. Ciani, Mayor Steve Morley, former Public Works Chair Jim Kennedy, Vice Chair Chris Healy, Alderman Michael Bram, on the finance side, Chairman Kevin York, I think we had Vice Chair Marty Deuter in there for a while, Alderman Mark Mullner, Michael Honquist, Danny Palomski, some of whom did committee work, financed public work, some who helped negotiate some tenuous relationships at that time with our school board or park district. So, I also want to thank Elmhurst District 205 Boards, past and present, including Superintendent Dave Moyer, the Elmhurst Park District Boards, past and present, and its executive director, Jim Rogers. The projects that were undertaken by the city under the consent order to address storm-related overflows in the sanitary system, the requirements of the consent order, the how and when they were addressed, the rehabilitation work that was completed since 2014 to improve the sanitary system was substantial. The city has inspected, cleaned many miles of sanitary sewer lines, and we have built 14 stormwater projects to store 131 acre-feet of water. And for those who don't remember, that's an acre, one foot acre is an acre wide and one foot deep. It's a lot of water. We've improved neighborhoods with open space, and overall, we positively improved and affected about 500 homes in the city of Elmhurst. So, this is a significant milestone in our efforts to retain Elmhurst's high quality of life. We have been a leader in stormwater efforts to mitigate the problems, sanitary and stormwater. Other communities have looked to us, how did you do it? If you look into the Cook County West suburbs that are east of us, they're starting to go through it. We've done it, and we spent a lot of money. We did the planning first, and we got it right. So, we can applaud ourselves. And all the community. Oh, but there's more. So, I'm pleased to announce that the Elmhurst Fire Department is the recipient of the 2024 Dr. Joseph Hartman Award for Medical Excellence in the Pre-Hospital Environment. The first runner-up was Oak Brook Terrace Fire Department, and the second runner-up is Downers Grove Fire Department. We will have a presentation before, I don't know if it'll be before the council, but before the fire department. And so, this is something that is given out by Good Samaritan Hospital, who is our sponsor for our EMS services. So, that's a very significant award. Also, in the police EMS side, this is a letter from Rob Wagner, who's the Assistant Principal for Athletics at York High School, who many of you probably know. The letter is written to Bill Solka of our fire department. I would like to share this with you. Your CPR training to the York Athletic Coaching Staff this year saved the life of a student athlete. On Friday, April 12, the girls' track team was competing in Downers Grove North at a large outdoor track meet. One of our triple jumpers completed a jump, landed in the sand pit, got up, and then collapsed for no reasons. The adults working the event attended to the student athlete. She was unresponsive and not breathing. Our assistant track coach started giving CPR, chest compressions, a Downers Grove North parrot. Working the event called 911. The athletic trainer was there with an AED. A lot of initials here, hang with me. The EMT showed up in four to six minutes and took over. The student athlete was taken to Good Sam Hospital, put on a ventilator, and not conscious. She was not breathing on her own at the hospital. She was transported to Lutheran General in Park Ridge. She's, I don't know if she's still there now, but as of two weeks ago, she was, but making a recovery. She's conscious and on her own. Doctors have performed numerous tests on her heart and brain. Didn't know the cause, but the good news is the student athlete should be released from the hospital, then in the next week or so, and back in school. Very scary situation for everyone. Thank you for teaching CPR to our staff. Our coach did exactly what he was supposed to do in an emergency situation, and everyone from the EMTs to the doctors stated that the early CPR saved her life. I greatly appreciate your helping our coaching staff get trained. So, I'm very proud of our outreach efforts to our fire department. I think just one more here. The Arbor Day Foundation has named Elmhurst as a 2023 TreeCDUSA. Makes it a place every Elmhurst resident should be proud that we live in this community. We met the four requirements, maintaining a tree board or department, having a tree care ordinance, dedicating an annual community forest budget of at least $2 per capita, and hosting an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. So, a congratulation to our own Arbor Department. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me take over and share some additional good news. And this is regarding the History Museum, and of course, the Heritage Foundation that's closely tied with it. We were just notified that the museum was honored to receive two awards from the Illinois Association of Museums. The Regional History Museum was awarded the 2024 Award of Superior Achievement in Conservation and Collections and the 2024 Award of Excellence for Special Projects, both showcasing the dedication and ingenuity of the Elmhurst History Museum staff. The Superior Achievement for Conservation and Collections was for the restoration of the historically significant painting by G.P.A. Healy depicting Jenny Jane Bird Bryant, the wife of Thomas Barber Bryant, a distinguished figure in Chicago and Elmhurst history. Our curator of collections, Dan Lund, through him, the painting restoration project began with the acquisition of the painting through a private donations and the support of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. The painting now hangs in the museum's, by all accounts, the Story of Elmhurst exhibit, which is at the top floor of the museum, for those listening who might not know that. And of course, admission's free every day. The museum was also honored to receive the 2024 Award of Excellence for Special Projects for supporting programs and events tied to the exhibit "In Pursuit of Happiness: Immigrants in Our Communities." That was spearheaded by Jesse Wandersee, who is our supervisor of education services. Through that, the museum offered a variety of unique and accessible programs to complement the exhibit, including a riveting performance by the Chicago Immigrant Orchestra and a cultural crossroad celebration held in partnership with Elmhurst, with York High School's International Club, the Immigrant Solidarity DuPage, and the Zeilin Foundation. Reminder, as I said, the museum is open to all ages and offers free admission, open from 1 to 5, Sunday and Tuesday through Friday, and 10 to 5 on Saturday. Thank you, Mayor.
I think I'll go back to one more. I forgot we had the Elmhurst Bluebacker 5K. First one, Alderman Hill. I'm talking about your race. Number, some aldermen ran. Our police chief ran. It was a pretty sight to see everyone out there except me running. And I think it's the first annual, and I congratulate you on a very successful effort to get funds raised for the Honor Flight for our veterans. Are there any other reports from the dais?
Alderman Veremis.
Alderman Veremis.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mention that on Saturday, May 18, at 11:30 to 2, it is the 31st Annual Spring Grove Pet Parade, my favorite, favorite event of the year. The event is free. We're going to have crafts for kids, pet contests, puppuchinos. There will be local rescue groups that are attending and bringing dogs that are available for adoption, including As Good as Gold, which is the Golden Retriever Rescue Group that I do some stuff for. So, you can register at springgrow.com and hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Bram? Thank you. Two things. First, I'd like to make a request in regards to just seeing a lot of economic development happening.
a lot of economic development happening, happening within town. If we can maybe have the Business Development Manager come and do a presentation in regards to the new businesses coming to town and what we see in our near future. And then the second item, it's kind of an announcement, but it's also a question. I saw that Representative Mike Quigley announced today on social media, there's $240 million headed to Illinois to identify and replace lead service lines. He also stated, across the country, we'll see up to 1.7 million lead pipes replaced, securing clean drinking water for countless families. If we have any idea if any of those funds have been allocated at this time to the city of Elmhurst, or any in DuPage County, and then will, no pun intended, trickle down to the city of Elmhurst.
Well, on your first topic, we're already working with our Business Development Director to get the announcements about the new businesses, so you should see that shortly.
Great.
Last week, city manager and I worked with both Congressmen Caston and Garcia, and we put in, and I think we previewed in small groups, some of the different projects that we have applied for. I'm not saying we'll get them all. Lead pipe replacement was one. There are some initiatives for capital projects for our police department, including body cam. I won't go through them all, but there are a number that we put together. I am hopeful that we have maintained sufficient contact, that we, I might be wrong, but I hope we'll be successful at least a little bit from each of our congressmen to get some assistance in some of those areas, one of which may be lead pipe replacement.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, take a motion to adjourn?
Not quite.
Oh, we got to do those ordinances, yep.
Not quite.
Got my glasses, too. All right.
8.1.
8.1. Clerk Tamer?
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement agreement for the property commonly known as Meadows Park, located at 120 North Hampshire Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois, see item 6.13.
All right. May I have a motion to put ordinance 8.1 before the council? Who's this out of? Public Works. Alderman Bram with the motion. Alderman Schenko with the second. Alderman Bram?
I'll defer for any questions.
All right. And this was item 6.14 on our consent agenda.
Mayor, may I just speak to this?
Yes, Alderman Bastido.
Okay, and so this is in regard to sanitary sewer improvement project that's parallel to the UP Railroad tracks in Gold Meadows Park. An easement required to ensure sufficient space for equipment and materials. So thank you for agreeing to suspend the rules in the interest of starting construction as soon as possible. We are ready to begin.
All right. So the justification is to get the project moving, to get the materials. All right. Any other discussion on 8.1? And as I say, that was 6.13, not 6.14. Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. 8.1 passes. We're on to Resolutions. 9.1. Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and contract for the 2024 sanitary sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation project number 24-15 for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, see item 6.14.
May I have a motion to put 9.1 before the council? Alderman Bram with the motion. Alderman Schenko with the second. Alderman Bram?
I'll defer to Chair Bastido, if she would like to speak to it.
Chair Bastido?
Thank you. This project consists of sanitary sewer lining of 11,350 linear feet of pipe, manhole rehab, and other projects. We lost time when the original low bidder withdrew their bid. So thank you for voting to suspend the rule.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 9.1? Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. 9.2 passes. Onto Resolution 9.3. Clerk Tamer?
We're at 9.2.
I'm sorry, 9.2. I got the glasses, but they're not the right ones.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2024 Water Main Improvements Program, project number 24-01, see item 6.15.
All right. Motion to put 9.2 before the council. Alderman Bram with the motion. Alderman Schenko with the second. Alderman Bastido. Anything to add?
Thank you, yes. This work includes the replacement of part of the water main along Route 83. We ask that suspend the rules to stick to the timelines and the IDOP permits, so thank you for your approval.
Anything, any other discussion on 9.2? Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. 9.2 passes. Clerk Tamer, would you read the resolution on 9.3?
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the Park Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Project PW 23-10 for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, see item 6.16.
A motion to pass. Alderman Bram, second. Alderman Schenko. Alderman Bastido?
Thank you. This project involves the relocation of the aging Park Avenue Bridge. It's required to maintain the safety of the structure and extend the useful life of the bridge. Thank you for voting to suspend the rules. It's required to complete the project before the Elmhurst Craft Beer Fest, which is a fundraiser for the Elmhurst History Museum. As you all know, it's a very popular event and draws thousands of visitors to Elmhurst.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 9.3? Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
I'm sorry, you're here. Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Resolution 9.3 passes. 9.4. Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of change order number one for the Park Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Project PW 23-10, see item 6.16.
Motion to put 9.4 before the council. Alderman Bram with the motion. Alderman Schenko with the second. Alderman Bastido?
Thank you. This change order was part of the same report under 6.16. Due to the bid being over the budgeted amount, lower construction agreed to remove the steel beam painting from the project to reduce the cost. So thank you again for voting to suspend the rule to keep this project on track to finish before the Elmhurst Beer Fest.
Thank you, Alderman Bastido. Any other discussion on 9.4? Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Resolution 9.4 passes. Item 10, other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Item 11, adjourned. Can I have another motion to adjourn? Alderman Deuter with the motion. Alderman Brennan with the second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who had the second?
Alderman Brennan.
Brennan, you want to roll call?
Yeah.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo absent park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. We are adjourned. Thank you.